Good evening and welcome to the study session of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, District, City, City Accessory Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley and Moreno Valley Housing Authority. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call the study session meeting to order April tenth, two thousand and eighteen at six P M. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright.
Everyone please face the flag and recite after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Gaiba, let the record reflect Councilmember Gaiba's absent. Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protembaka.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hackesnades, City Clerk.
Marshall Ironman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Paul Early, Assistant City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sandsmeyer, Acting Community Development Director.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Thank you. It is now time for public comments on matters on the agenda only. So only on the matters on the agenda. So if you'd like to speak about the Eastern Municipal or the cannabis taxation, this would be the time to do so. There's a three-minute time limit per person. Please complete and submit a blue speaker slip to the city clerk, actually to the bailiff, and then the bailiff will provide it to the city clerk. All remarks and questions shall be addressed to the presiding officer, myself, or to the City Council, and I ask that all speakers keep their comments respectful and that members of the audience remain courteous towards those at the podium. Madam Clerk, how many speakers?
One so far. Rafael Gutierrez.
Okay, Rafael.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers.
Good evening, Rafael.
Staff and our guests and residents. I'm glad that E W, EMWD is involved on the east side of Moreno Valley. When I started to look at this and try to get more information out of it, I only thought of one thing. We don't have to dig for wells. That's a good thing. I thought about eighteen ninety when we first started out here in Moreno Valley. We had to dig for a well just to have water. But today's modern technology, we can find water faster and we can pump it to other sides, to the other side of a land much quicker through the piping system that we have and things that last a lot longer. The only thing I hope that we don't have disputes over water. That's the only thing that can hurt anything. But otherwise, otherwise in that I welcome them to help us on the east side so we can have water there so when new developer comes, they have their fair share of water and new housing because there's a lot of areas there that can also have, um, um, new housing for water because we're building on the east side, especially on eucalyptus with the houses and the, um, car dealership and things like that. So that's a good thing. Uh, my second one's A two. Um, you mentioned the word taxation, pretty powerful word. A lot of people don't like to pay taxes, including myself, or little. That's honest, you know, but, um, we're hoping that we don't tax the heck out of the city. That's the only way I can say it. We don't want to tax the city too high. If we can keep it the way we pay our regular taxes, our state taxes, seven point seven five or, or eight percent, don't go no more than ten, it would be fair for the public because there's a lot of people that do need the medication of that plant. I like to call it a plant because it is a plant that's being diluted into many different things, you know, so it can help people with their cancer and addiction because my goal is not to see people do heroin or do pills. So if we can keep the taxes low so we can help the people in the city of Moreno Valley, it'll pay back on its own. If we have a thousand people paying ten percent, that's fantastic, but if we got only a hundred people doing thirty percent, it doesn't work. If we keep it low, we'll have enough people to pay for itself. That's the point of helping and doing what we're doing in the city with the cannabis. We're here to help. There's money to be made, but we're here to help more than anything.
Thank you, Rafael.
Are there any other speaker?
Yes, one more. Ken Iglesias.
Good evening. I just came to support A one. I think it's a wonderful idea. That's all. Thank you.
No more speakers.
We'll go ahead and hear from our first item, which is Eastern Municipal Water District Update: Infrastructure to Support Development in the City's East End, and we'll have a report of public works, uh, first, and then, uh, I'll just ask the council that we just allow them to, to give their report first.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council, we invited Eastern Municipal Water District to give you an update tonight. Obviously, we're all focused very intently on developing our city, building our community. The real potential for growth is on our east side, and so EMWD, they, as you know, are our partners in developing our community. So we asked them to come here tonight and talk with you a little bit about the preparations they're making to support robust development in that portion of our community.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Joe Mawad. I'm the Assistant General Manager at EMWD. I oversee the planning, engineering, and construction. Thank you for the opportunity tonight to be here to present and brief you on our capital improvement program as well as developer-driven projects on the east end of the city. Before I, I dive into the details, I just wanted to acknowledge our board president is here in the audience today, Mr. David Slosson, as well as our Director of New Business, Maria Sambido, who's been working very closely with city staff to facilitate the proposed developments within the city. So I thought I start by just giving you a brief background on EMWD. Many of you are familiar with EMWD, but we were established approximately seventy years ago, initially primarily to serve the agricultural community in western Riverside County. Over the last many decades, we've obviously evolved and grown and expanded. We are somewhat unique in that we provide water, wastewater, and recycled water service, both wholesale as well as retail. We are governed by a five-member elected board and Director David Slosson represents the Moreno Valley service area. We have more than six hundred employees with an operating budget of two hundred and seventy-five million dollars for the current fiscal year. That does not include our capital improvement program. We currently have budgeted for the five-year CIP at approximately four hundred and fifty-eight million dollars, which I will discuss in greater detail. So part of our role is to work very closely with the city as well as other land use agencies to be able to accommodate growth. We examine the city's general plan as well as specific plans, and we incorporate that information into our master plans, and we've developed master plans for water, for sewer, as well as the recycled water. One thing to note is that EMWD overall is currently within our service area. We're only about thirty-eight percent built out, so there is significant amount of growth yet to occur within our service area. Thus, the need to advance, plan, design, and construct various capital improvement projects and work closely with the development community to make sure that we can provide them with the water, sewer, and recycled water services that they need. I mentioned our capital improvement program. This graph represents our proposed investments in each one of our product lines over the next five years. The blue portion of the graph indicates the investments we will be making in the water system, the green and the sewer, and then the purple and recycled, and there is a small amount in, uh, general projects identified as black. Those are solar projects or other general projects. As you can see, our planned investments in the water system average about forty-eight million dollars a year. The sewer investments, as, as you can see here, they, they expand this year and next year, and then they normalize in the subsequent years. Those are primarily driven by a large construction project currently ongoing at our Temecula Reclamation Facility. That is a hundred million dollar project. It is our largest single CIP project, and that will be completed mid-next year, and thus you'll see the normalization of our future investments in the sewer product line. There are a number of other significant projects that we are advancing, including another desalination facility. We have two operational desalter plants. We have another project that's currently in design and will be in construction over the next year. We're also looking at expanding our solar facilities, and we're also looking at an extensive groundwater banking projects. We, we want to continue to invent, to invest in our local water resources. We want to have a balanced portfolio in terms of imported water as well as, uh, local resources. So overall, the CIP over the five years is estimated at four hundred and fifty-eight. We are on target to secure about sixty-five million dollars of external funding. This is state and federal funding. We believe we're going to meet and exceed that target that we've set. So now I want to transition over to projects within the city of Moreno Valley. Many of you are familiar that we are currently advancing the design to extend a major water transmission system along Cactus. It's a Cactus to Feeder Pipeline. If you may recall, about ten years ago, we extended a forty-eight-inch diameter water pipeline from Interstate I fifteen to, I'm sorry, from Interstate two fifteen over to Heacock Boulevard. That was completed about ten years ago. This project will extend that pipeline further from Heacock ultimately to Moreno Beach, and the intention is to be able to provide additional water capacity to be able to accommodate the planned development and planned growth within the east end of the city. Overall, the budget for the project is at forty-eight million dollars, but it is being phased sequentially, which I'll, I'll show here in a second. The first phase, we anticipate to go out to construction bid later this year. Subsequent phases are planned for twenty twenty-five, twenty thirty, but that is a function of the rate of growth that we're going to see within the city as well. EMWD staff has held numerous meetings with, uh, city staff to coordinate the alignment of the proposed pipeline as well as traffic control and other constraints, and we are also planning to coordinate closely with the city staff relative to public outreach to the residents as well as the business community. This figure represents the proposed alignment of the pipeline. As I mentioned, it will extend the existing pipeline that terminates at Heacock and Cactus. The, the blue section represents the first phase, which is approximately eight thousand feet of forty-two-inch diameter pipeline, which will extend along Cactus, north along Indian, and then east along Alessandro to terminate the first phase at Paris Boulevard. There will be two turnouts. Those turnouts are essentially connections to the existing water conveyance pipelines to be able to support additional demand. And beyond that, the, the yellow, um, section represents Phase Two, and then Phase Three is shown in the red. As I mentioned, that extends that pipeline to Moreno Beach. What I'll show later in the presentation is also the proposed developments immediately east of Moreno Beach, which we are working with very closely to identify the necessary infrastructure to be able to support that, that growth. Another, uh, project currently within the city, uh, this is under construction that you may be familiar with, is we are constructing a new water pump station, uh, at Elder, as shown here in red. Also associated with that project is an extensive pipeline that runs along Elder and then north along Paris Boulevard. In fact, the, the section of the pipeline on Elder has been recently completed. Now we're, in fact, at the intersection of Paris Boulevard and Elder, so this is an ongoing construction effort. We're working very closely with the city on traffic control and mitigating the construction impact. Once completed, this facility will allow us to abandon an existing pump station at the corner of Paris and Ironwood. If you, uh, recall, that station, uh, with the street improvements that have occurred over the years, there's an encroachment upon that station, so we want to be able to demolish the surface feature of that pump station, abandon it, and then ultimately dedicate that corner back to the city so the city can make the necessary improvements along that, that corner of the intersection. Another project I want to mention, this is an upcoming project, which we anticipate will be in construction next year, is to construct a eucalyptus booster station at the location shown here immediately, um, west of the Walmart Shopping Center. This facility, once constructed, will allow us to abandon the, uh, the existing Elder Booster Station immediately north of the I sixty freeway. We are working very closely with the development, uh, along Eucalyptus Avenue to orient and configure this pump station so it blends in with the, uh, proposed entryway to the development, uh, and again, we are finalizing the design this year with planned construction in two thousand and nineteen. So as I mentioned, we're also working very closely with, uh, a large number of development on the east end of the city to identify and plan for the necessary infrastructure to serve water, sewer, uh, and other services. One thing I just wanted to highlight is that we have master plans for each one of our product lines. In this case, what you're looking at is, uh, an exhibit from our water master plan, which essentially looks at the land use, uh, on the east end of the city all the way to ultimate build-out. And we identify the necessary, in this case, water infrastructure that is needed to accommodate this growth, and essentially, the master plan serves as a roadmap. We utilize this master plan to be able to sit down and work with the city and with the development community to understand what is needed, what, what size pipelines are needed, what type of pump station, the location of these facilities, and be able to collaboratively work on implementing those necessary improvements. We do the same thing with the sewer. Uh, we identify the necessary sewer system that is needed to accommodate the proposed land use. Uh, we look at the sizing, at the conceptual alignment, and then obviously, those details are further refined once development has greater information, greater details and information that they can share with us. So we are currently working with a number of developers on the east end of the city, and they are listed, uh, on this figure, including, uh, World Logistics, uh, the Skechers Project, Aldi, Prologis, and Quell Ranch. All of them have been very active in working with us to identify what is the necessary infrastructure system. In this case, what you're looking at is the proposed water infrastructure system that would be needed to benefit all of these developments. So we've worked with them to essentially approach this in a fair share concept, meaning that those beneficiaries from this local water system would have to participate equally to, based on the number of equivalent dwelling units that they will develop, pay their fair share, or otherwise essentially build the infrastructure, donate it, and get reimbursed from us by having EMWD collect the fair share from the other development participants. It's been a successful collaborative approach so far. In fact, um, World Logistics had retained a consultant, C H Tim Hill, who developed this fair share approach and analysis, and in this study, they identified the necessary water infrastructure, the associated cost, the contributing parcels in terms of demand, um, the cost distribution of the infrastructure, and then essentially the approach of either to build a portion of that infrastructure and donate it and get reimbursed appropriately, or if the developer does not want to proceed and build, then they essentially participate financially, and others would lead the implementation of those segments of the infrastructure. We have been working with the developers, uh, for several months now, and, and we believe we have reached agreement on the key terms of this arrangement. In fact, we are looking at taking an agreement to our Board of Directors for consideration in late spring this year, and then, uh, once we have that completed, we're also going to focus on a fair share approach for the sewer infrastructure that is needed to serve the developments. So that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions you may have relative to the ongoing effort with the development community on the east end of the city or any of our capital improvement program projects that I described earlier.
So, um, just a quick question. So there's two different ways, I guess, businesses or developers can participate. One is they can either participate financially first for the infrastructure, or, um, EMWD would finance it, and then they would reimburse, pay their reimbursement?
So there's, uh, it's a great question. So this is somewhat of a unique situation because you have a number of developers who, uh, have a mutual benefit in advancing a series of water system improvements that would benefit the, the collective, if you will. So to make certain that everyone is sharing equally in the costs of this infrastructure, a consultant was retained that looked at what are the demands associated with the ultimate development of this area, specifically the area that I showed in the, in the exhibit, sized those facilities, the water facilities, and estimated what the cost would be to implement them. And there was a, basically a scheduled fees assigned based upon each development's growth potential, meaning how many equivalent dwelling units or how, how many they're going to basically develop. They would be assessed a cost on a per unit. So they can either participate in, in two ways. One is they pay financially their fair share contribution, so another developer would essentially, uh, advance the construction of those facilities. Now, the other developer, we would have to do a financial reconciliation. We would have to look at how much they contributed versus how much they were supposed to financially participate. If that contributed facility exceeds what they were supposed to financially participate, then obviously from the fees we've collected from the other development, we would reimburse them accordingly. So ultimately, everyone needs to only pay their fair share to implement these facilities. Some of them, depending upon their timing, who's going first, some of them will decide to go ahead and advance those facilities, build them, and get credit for them. Others may simply want to financially participate in those facilities.
Do you know overall what's the, the cost of the infrastructure for the water? I mean, only related to water, on that east end?
Sure. Currently, the, uh, the study, uh, that was completed has estimated the total cost of the water infrastructure at approximately sixteen point four million dollars. Phase one.
And then that would be equally shared among the...
That's correct.
...developers.
That, that is correct. And as you can see here per the exhibit, there, there's multiple pressure zones in addition to the pipelines. There's, uh, pump stations, there's water tanks, so it's a fairly extensive system that's been identified.
Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you. Um, the first question regarding Phase One of the expansion from Heacock over to Moreno Beach. Um, is there an ETA on completion for Phase One?
So the, the district's project, which I'll, I'll go back to, the figure, that extension from Heacock up along Indian, along Alessandro, and ultimately Moreno Beach, that is approximately a five-mile, uh, pipeline. That will be phased. The first phase being the, the blue segment, which we, uh, plan to advertise for construction later this year. So we are nearing, uh, design completion, and we should have bids by the end of this calendar year. Uh, we anticipate then the construction duration to be approximately about a year and a half, and that will complete the section, uh, up to Paris Boulevard. The subsequent sections, the, the yellow section shown and the red, those are tentatively identified as being needed by twenty twenty-five and subsequently twenty thirty, but as I mentioned, if the demands increase at a more rapid fashion, then we may have to accelerate our plans accordingly. The, the intent here is to be able to accommodate the, the planned growth in east Moreno Valley.
And as far as, uh, the construction itself, will that require any kind of, well, you mentioned changes to traffic or working together with our public works department. What will that look like? Closing lanes or what, what's that going to look like?
So, uh, we have worked very closely with the city staff. In fact, the alignment that is shown here was in collaboration. Uh, we had submitted the early conceptual alignment corridor constraints analysis to the city. The city provided us feedback, uh, and based on that feedback, this is the, the alignment that was selected. There will be detailed traffic control plans that will have to be, uh, developed and submitted to the city for review and approval. I, I can't comment on the details yet because we don't have those prepared, but they may include lane closures or detours. That, that is typical of this type and this magnitude of a project. And we will, as I mentioned, do extensive public outreach to the businesses as well as the, the residences that will be impacted by our construction project.
Thank you. And then my last question is in regards to the water desalination plants that you mentioned?
Yes.
Uh, you mentioned there that you currently have two existing?
Yes.
And you're working on one. Can you give us more information on those desal plants?
Sure, absolutely. So currently, uh, within the city of Menifee, um, we have the Paris and Menifee desalters that, that have been operational for many years. Those currently produce eight million gallons per day of potable water to serve, uh, the community. That water is produced from what is a, essentially a brackish or saline basin that is not currently suitable for, uh, potable consumption. By extracting that water, treating it through reverse osmosis and advanced treatment, we're able to bring that water up to potable standards and, and be able to utilize that water. We are currently in the final design of a third desalter, which will add three point six million gallons per day of additional production. That is a significant amount of local water that we are going to be able to produce, and that facility also has the ability to be expanded up to five point four million gallons per day. We are fortunate in that we were able to secure grant funding from the state in the amount of twenty-two and a half million dollars to support the construction of that project. We're also fortunate in that we entered into, uh, an agreement with Metropolitan Water District to help fund, uh, and subsidize the cost to produce the water long-term, uh, and that's a, what's, what's called a local resource program agreement where they subsidize these types of local initiatives. So we're very excited about that project. We're in final design currently. Um, we anticipate to be in construction early next year. That facility will be co-located next to the existing desalters in, in Menifee. However, the, the wells extend fairly broadly throughout the, uh, north, uh, Paris, uh, uh, area. There, there's a series of, uh, brackish groundwater collection wells that extract the brackish water and convey it down to that location.
Thank you, and you actually touched on another topic, um, regarding Metropolitan and
Yes.
the, the projects that they have going on up there with the, uh, the new pipe, pipelines that they're trying to put in.
Yes.
They're talking about different phases now, and one thing that, uh, that I was, you know, bringing up a couple of times was also investments into, into water desalination across the coast in all the different cities, Carlsbad and a lot of other cities, and then now here. So I'm glad that you brought that up, and hopefully in the long term, uh, it'll help get some cities off the water grid and will help, um, you know, to allocate water to the entire state. So that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Marquez?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say thank you for, um, being here.
Thank you for having me.
I'm really, excuse me, I'm really learning now on this water. I got two questions also. You had mentioned that eucalyptus, you're going to have a, um, a project going on by Walmart.
Yes.
Now, on, on the diagram you had here, you have no water coming from Heacock or, or from Cactus right now to that area, correct?
No, no, we do. We're, we're simply trying to expand our water conveyance capacity. We, we, we currently have, uh, pipelines, water pipelines in this part of the city. Absolutely.
The, the station you have at Paris and Elder.
Yes.
Is, is that going to increase the water pressure for, for the east end of town?
That, that facility is going to replace the existing Paris and Ironwood, which is shown there on the corner. That facility at Paris and Ironwood was built back in the sixties, so it, it has reached the end of its useful life. As I mentioned, there's also an encroachment in that facility as well as the, uh, improvements that were made some years ago along Paris Boulevard. So it, it is in our interest to be able to abandon that existing facility. The new facility that is under construction at Elder, and there's a, a exhibit that's shown here on, on Slide Eight that shows what that facility would look like, that will improve significantly the reliability and the capacity of our water system conveyance within that part of the city. This pump station that is under construction is significantly greater in capacity than the existing station at Paris and Ironwood, so it does definitely add to the reliability and the redundancy of the water system.
But that station is going to supply water to the east end of town, or is it already doing it through the Ironwood Pump Station?
The, the Ironwood Pump Station already provides, uh, part of that water. This will provide greater capacity.
Okay. I've had some residents complain about low water pressure, and, and their concern was, you know, keep building and building and building out here, what's going to happen to the water pressure? The more, you know, you build, is the water pressure going to go down? So now I can tell them, no, it isn't. You're, 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 you're building. The second one is the, um, non-drinking water.
Yes.
You had mentioned that. Is that water that we use here in the city for landscaping? Is, is it, where does that water come from right now?
So it's, it's a great question. We have an extensive recycled water program. Um, in fact, over the last several years, we've used all of the water that has been produced from our reclamation plants, with the exception of, uh, last year was a very wet year, if you recall, and we were able to fill and we were able to fill all of our seasonal storage, and we had to discharge a very minuscule amount. But for the most part, for the last several years, all the water that is produced from our reclamation plants is utilized, primarily for irrigation, for agricultural use, for industrial use. A portion of the city has a recycled water system, and we are able to use that water for landscape irrigation and for other applications, for parks, for school districts. So we are always working with the development community. When there's a proposed development where it is in proximity to the recycled water infrastructure, and that recycled water infrastructure can be economically extended, and and there's significant amount of demand associated with that development, then we work closely with that development to be able to extend the recycled water service and 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 use that in lieu of of potable water. Every drop of recycled water we use allows us to offset demand on our potable system, which is to our collective advantage.
I've also had residents ask me, how do we get that recycled water for our our property instead of using our our regular water? They can't do that. I mean, there's no way, is there?
Well, we we work with a number of HOAs, where we provide recycled water for medium landscape irrigation, for green belt irrigation. But for individual homes, there are very strict regulations on the use of that recycled water, and it it becomes challenging to to manage, monitor, and and report that to the regulators. So we have not done residential homes, but we have worked extensively with a number of HOAs to be able to serve recycled water.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Mayor Protembaka?
Well, welcome to our city.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. And my question was similar to Councilman Councilmember Marquez as to who has access to the treated water. And I think you answered that question. And I'm very concerned about the growth that we're going to have in the east end. And I I see that we're working towards being prepared for the growth that's coming. And I'm happy to hear that you're developing the fair share analysis. So that that's good. I just wanted to make that comment because most of my questions have been answered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. And I just wanted to thank also Dave. Thanks for coming out. Appreciate it. Okay, we're going to go to A2, Discussion on Commercial Cannabis. Report of Financial and Management Services, Marshall?
Mayor, if I may, one moment, let me just grab that remote. Perfect. Well, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protembaka, council members. As they queue up the presentation here, the item this evening is kind of the initial steps towards looking at the local funding initiatives. What you'll see is through council's actions, we've initiated the initial application period for the commercial cannabis businesses. That application period opened up April 2nd and will continue through May 11th. So we're working through that process, responding to questions as we're receiving some inquiries on this and seeing some demand towards what we hope to be issuing the total permits in the future. As we've noted here, we do have the applications available on Planet Bids. That allows us a nice standard platform to receive all of the information. There's about twenty-three different required documents that each applicant has to submit through this process. So we've set it up through this to make sure that it's managed and they're aware of all the items being responded to. Additionally, we do still have on the city's website the frequently asked questions for the cannabis, which provides additional information for the public and applicants as they're interested in questions concerning cannabis. One thing to note too then is, following our application procedure along with the conditional use permits, all cannabis operations will also have to obtain state permits through one of the three state licensing agencies. So just to recap, through council action, the number of permits that we have approved to date are the twenty-seven, and they cover all of the different permit categories that are available by the state. So moving towards kind of a local funding option, a potential tax measure in the future, we wanted to conduct some due diligence to begin this process. What we did was we worked with, it's referred to as FM3, Fairbanks, Maslin, Mullin, Metz, and Associates. They are the survey firm that we previously worked with on many items for the city, including the last transient occupancy tax measure. So they have a familiarity with our public. We worked with them. They conducted this survey to really focus on the public perception, what public seeing is needs in the community and the ability or the perception on a cannabis tax in the future. Quickly, the the survey was about twenty minutes long, conducted March 10th through the 18th. And they were individually randomly selected. It was conducted by phone and email. And again, it was in English and Spanish to make sure that we got all of the demographics within the city represented. Some of the initial preliminary results that we're finding, and these are very similar to what we saw with the last tax measure as well for the TOT, is that residents see that there is a need in the city for additional funding. And they are prioritizing a lot of these needs towards protection and maintenance of existing services. They want to see what we have in existence continue to be in existence and provided by the city. And basically, the residents continue to strongly value public safety and these infrastructure projects that we've been working on. With the main thing is really where, as we look towards the future of the local funding measure, we really want to work to protect those items and maintain those services. That's the feedback we're getting from our residents is the main priority. So as we begin to take this information, we'll we'll be working with the survey organization and others to get additional information back from the public, conducting due diligence over the period to really see what feedback we can receive. But as we initially start to construct this conceptual ballot language, there's a couple of key things that we're looking at at this point. As again with the last ballot measure, one of the things we want to make sure is this would be a voter approval of an ordinance to essentially maintain and improve these local services through the unrestricted general revenues. What that essentially means is this is a general tax. It will be a simple majority approval. Those funds will go into the general fund, and then they'll be allocated based on the council's discretion of the use of those general funds. Initially, we're looking at a commercial cannabis tax not exceeding eight percent of gross receipts. That affects most of the uses. And then with cultivation, it's looking at a fifteen-dollar per square foot charge there. And these would be the maximum amounts that we'd be looking at. Initially, this is looking to generate approximately two point two million. But we'll have to see how this is dictated by the market as we move forward in the future. And again, with all of our tax measures, we include independent audits of our financials, public review of those items as well. And all of those funds are used locally as they're expended through the general fund. So the next steps for where we're at now is we'll we'll continue to engage the community. We'll get feedback on those and and see what additional perceptions or feedback that the residents have, and really try to further identify the priorities of the city through not only our budgeting process, but as we really develop this tax measure through the next couple of months. So when we look again at where we kind of came up with that initial eight percent and fifteen dollars per square foot, Michael Coleman with the League of Cities has done some comprehensive research on different tax rates. We've utilized that analysis, and you can see about, out of the four hundred and eighty-two cities, fifty-eight counties, currently only about eighty agencies are allowing cannabis or taxing it within their jurisdiction. So just looking at that analysis, you can see retail and other other would include the manufacturing, distribution, testing, all of those items in there. We tend to see a maximum tax rate in the state of twenty percent with an average of about ten and a half percent. What we have seen over the last couple of years and what it's kind of indicating towards is that these tax rates are starting to drop. If you've noticed, the state is moving forward, looking at reducing their tax rate. We've seen other cities and counties that initially were in this. They adopted higher rates and they're reducing those. So you are seeing market pressures with supply and demand economics where we want to have a structure that gives us flexibility to maintain viable businesses and not have such a high tax rate that they can't survive within this market. When we look at cultivation, you will see again on, that maximum was fifty dollars per square foot. We are much lower, but again, that's driven by market demand where we're seeing the average, although it's at twenty-two, starting to reduce as we move forward. And then just for reference, some of the adjacent agencies we've looked at, Paris is up to ten percent and twenty-five dollars per square foot. San Jacinto is fifteen percent and fifty dollars per square foot. So the rates that we're proposing will make us very competitive within our marketplace. And you will see, though, they did adopt language that was an up to, which allows them flexibility to reduce those down as well. Riverside and Riverside County at this point do not have any items for reference. So based on the twenty-seven permits and cultivation or cannabis, commercial cannabis categories, we did some analysis with HDL on this to kind of look at, what is the general gross receipts or square footage that we could assume from some of these businesses? So based on those items, you can see that a distribution center may generate about two million dollars in gross receipts. Well, if we're looking at a proposed maximum tax rate of eight percent, although we have these higher numbers based on the market, we may look at proposing or presenting to council an option to actually have a lower applied tax rate. This will help with some of the initial establishment and see where markets will go, but it won't preclude you from increasing that tax rate in the future up to eight percent or or down as needed in the marketplace. But a distribution center generating two million dollars in gross receipts essentially could generate a tax of that five percent of a hundred thousand dollars per year. And these are based on, you know, again, kind of what HDL's seen through different jurisdictions, different different operations as they monitor and manage those through the other cities. So where that works for us, as we kind of look at how this applies, if we had the maximum twenty-seven permits, we potentially could see about three point two million dollars by fiscal year nineteen twenty. And looking at this cash flow analysis, seventeen eighteen, we'll be closing the permit application process. They'll still have to go through the CUP, but most importantly, they'll have to receive a state license before anything else. So although the city's been moving diligently to get through this process, we're still going to have to rely on the state for the last permit before we can do any final items. Once they have that state permit, we'd be looking at some revenue in eighteen nineteen. For simple steps, I've looked at just six months' analysis to see what we could potentially generate. And this would be if we were proceeding with the November two thousand and eighteen election, and it was approved by the voters. So you kind of see on the conservative thing, we'll see more of the revenues in nineteen twenty as we allow the tax to come into effect and the businesses begin to operate. So where that leads us today again is, this gives you kind of an introduction to what we're looking at on the tax rates, what we're seeing from our consultants and marketplace. We'll continue to do due diligence with the public, get feedback from them on where these dollars should, or where there is a need in the community and how this can benefit all of us. Through that time period, we'll be additionally doing additional other communication with the public, just making them aware of the cannabis and the potential tax measure. And when we get to about July, we'll be proceeding with council with an ordinance to place this item on the ballot, if you wish so, following through with Election Day. With that, that concludes my report, and we are available for questions.
Yeah, real quick, Marshall, what was the favor rate as far as, you know, going with a taxation?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
The favor rate?
Favor?
Yeah, from the survey.
Oh, approval rate? Oh, sorry, thank you. Initially, what we're seeing is is similar results to the the TOT measure. They will have the final stuff for us, but we were seeing similar to about sixty-four percent, so above the simple majority, but below the two-thirds.
Okay. And that's with likely voters? Were they likely voters?
They try to petition or or survey likely voters. We do have about eighty-one thousand registered voters, but the likely voters are about forty thousand plus, and they look at that pool for the survey.
And the reason I say that is because a lot of times it's really difficult to get someone to stay on the phone, you know, even for a minute, you know, or or five minutes. So a lot of times when they stay on the phone for twenty minutes, a lot of times you'll get a lot of older folks.
Yes.
And so I think if if it was sixty-four percent, you know, I know you're, I don't know if that's exact, but if it is sixty-four percent, then more than likely, you know, you know, I think it would be even a lot higher, you know, when Election Day happens.
You know, Mayor, you you bring up an excellent point. That's something that we've grappled with consistently with these surveys. And from a lay perspective, I said the same thing. Well?
I wouldn't stay on.
I wouldn't either. I wouldn't spend twenty, twenty-five minutes. But when I've asked those questions of the experts, they kind of nod knowingly, and they're right every time. So I I've learned to not ask that question anymore because it, although it doesn't make sense to me, it seems to work out in the science of surveys that that's a valid sample.
It's going to be a lot higher, the the approval rating.
That would be great.
You know, so. The other question I have, though, is as far as the the tax rate, you know, I'd like it to be, like, I know you you mentioned eight percent. I'd like it to be like up to eight percent, but start with five percent. And then allow the council or the staff, you know, in time, you know, you know, it can increase, you know, as the market increases. But at least just put us at, you know, start at five percent so that we were a lot lower than other cities, you know, but but give us that opportunity up to eight percent.
And that that's our, that's our thinking of providing a a maximum that would give the council the option. And if there's more discussion on this will be helpful to us because our takeaway from this will be feedback that we can use to present an actual ballot measure to you.
And then what I like about this is that with those additional funds, potentially three point two million dollars, we can use some of that money for public safety. You know, we can put more boots on the ground, you know, all of those great things as well. So I think that's a great thing. The other thing, you know, I'll go ahead and, okay, Mayor Protembaka?
Questions on that chart right there? The cultivation across the line is different from the other businesses?
Yes, with the cultivation, the tax rate is typically set on a per-square-foot basis. So you see that cultivation, based on state limits, it's about twenty-two thousand square feet. So we'd be looking at that fifteen dollars or an applied rate of seven. So again, if council's direction is to present to the voters a tax rate of up to fifteen dollars, we'd look at council direction for applying a lower rate.
Okay, so what's the difference between the fifteen dollars per square foot and the seven dollars per square foot?
Again, that's with, the same thing with the eight versus five. We'd like to give you the option of a voter-approved rate that's high enough that if we had ability to raise it in the future, we would. But the initial tax actually set by council might be lower. That would encourage businesses to come in the initial period, allow us to use all of our permits, let them get established. That's kind of what we're seeing with the state, is the state applied a higher tax rate, but it's slowing down the implementation of the the commercial business. And so they're looking at temporarily reducing that. That's the structure that we would be proposing to you here.
Okay, so I have another question on the cultivation. Excuse me. You're going, or we're going to tax them, let's say five percent on their sales?
No, it's fifteen dollars.
Well, that's what I'm asking. And in addition, we're going to charge them fifteen dollars per or fifteen dollars per square foot? Or is it one or the other?
It's one or the other. Cultivation would be the per-square-foot. All other uses would be focused on the gross receipts.
Okay, so they don't have to worry about the square footage?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Now, when will you have the language that goes on the ballot to the city council?
Typically, based on the election calendar, we'll be coming about June or July to the council, and that's when you would approve the ordinance. During that time period, we'll be refining the language, looking at some of the material to make sure we're informing the public as to what we're going to be looking at. So we'll have a big window here of making sure we're communicating out there.
And what additional public outreach are we anticipating?
Similar to the the TOT measure, we will start with a lot of social media between the the city's Facebook, all the other items. We'll be putting out there different educational pieces. We've worked a lot with the chambers and other business organizations to make sure they're aware. We'll be conducting different mailings directly to the residents as well. We've got a number of mailings that we would propose on that. I think the idea is to make sure that we're accessing as much public, informing as much as possible. We're going to want to try multiple mediums to get there, you know, whether it's mail, it's social media, it's in person. And we do have a window of time here to communicate with them that allows us a greater opportunity to make sure they're informed.
And my last question is, up until today, do you know how many applications have been processed? Or not processed, but have been?
Yes.
Taken?
At this point, so with the system that we're using, that Planet Bids, every applicant must register in advance. Currently, we have thirty-eight individuals registered on that system. Currently, we have 38 individuals registered on that system. So they all have the opportunity to apply after that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Cabrera?
Marshall, I don't expect you to have these numbers, but by any chance, if I remember correctly, for San Jacinto and Paris, the max tax rates that they set are 10 and 15%, I believe. Do you by any chance know where they currently are and their tax rates?
I believe Paris is near the 10, but my understanding is that I've heard that they're looking at reducing it a little bit. San Jacinto, I haven't received any feedback on where they're actually applying some of those at this point.
I want to double check too, because I thought it was, they're at 13%, but they're looking to reduce to 10%.
And some of that is where they had prior medical marijuana only, and then they're looking at the new tax measure. So I believe the last one was the 10.
Thank you. And let's see. As far as, if this is approved, you know, if we go with these numbers, we set the max 8% and $15 per square foot, and the voters approve that in November, how would we go, or how would staff go about, say, if we set it initially at 5%, how would we go about changing that number? What's the process?
Councilman, that would be up to the council to handle via resolution. So that would be, it would be a public transparent process, but it's something that gives the council flexibility to do to make sure that we are in the right spot in the market to ensure that the industry grows in a healthy manner and that we can continue to regulate it effectively as this council has desired.
Thank you. And, you know, thank you to all staff for working on this. I mean, it's been going on for a while, but, I mean, it's moving forward. You're doing everything on time, like you said you would, so I just wanted to thank you for that.
Victoria, you had a quick one?
Yes, well, it's not so much a question, but a comment, is that the only people in the city, or from outside the city, that will be paying this tax are consumers, correct? So it's not going to affect the general public. We're not taxing the city. It's only for people that are going to this business.
That is entirely correct, Mayor Protem. It's just on those who would transact business at these establishments. And as you pointed out, residents from other cities, should they come to our businesses, they will be contributing to the city's general fund and the services that you wish to provide to our residents.
And I also think too, I mean, if we start at 5%, I mean, it's way lower than a lot of other cities, especially $15, you know, a lot lower than 50, 22. So one quick question I had is on the ballot language. I know you mentioned that, you know, you're looking for direction for it to come to council in July, but can we get some of that language? Is it the same consultant from the TOT tax?
It is, same consultant, same process.
Okay. If we could just be, you know, apprised of that, you know, the language, you know, maybe a month before, you know, like a draft? And then, so what I'm kind of hearing is that there's consensus basically to bring this, move forward to bring in July to the council for, you know, to determine whether we're going to put it on the ballot or not. That's number one. And then number two, a tax rate of up to 8%, but to start with 5%? Okay. All right, Councilor Marquez?
Kind of confused there now. Protem mentioned about the tax for the consumer. So what we're going to do is put on the ballot 5%? Is that what it's going to be?
Councilman, what I heard the consensus being is toward a maximum of 8% on the retail sales side, and then a maximum of $15 per square foot for cultivation. And then the council would set the actual applied rate lower than that, probably in the neighborhood of 5% and $7.
Oh, okay, okay.
And this is only for the people that are actually, it's not like just any resident that has to pay it, you know, it's only the people that are doing those transactions.
Transactions, okay.
That are into that.
Okay, okay. But Tom, you mentioned about if someone else from outside of the city comes in to purchase.
Absolutely. Just like if someone came from outside our city and bought an appliance at one of our stores, we benefit from the sales tax. Just like because, and because the camera's on, I need to say that it is 1% less expensive to shop on the east side of Day Street than it is on the west side. Shout out to all you Riverside residents, Shop Movel.
Okay, okay. You answered my, the question on the mailers, how are we going to get out? And then you brought up Paris and San Jacinto, so that was already answered. The ballot language, you want, my colleagues want to get this on the, before July? Is that?
Just to know what's going to, what it's going to say.
Okay, okay, so we can, we can work on the rewording it and stuff like that in July? Okay, that sounds about right, okay. Okay, that's all we have.
Okay, okay, one more, and then I'll close it, okay? Mayor Protem?
Thank you. Quick question. I understand the taxation, the percentage from the range between 5% and 8% that we're going to ask our voters to approve. I had a question about the square footage for cultivation. Is that also going to be on the ballot?
Will.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is, is so the consensus is those two things, a tax rate up to 8%, and then the council will apply it, a lower amount. And then number two, bring this to the council in July, so that way we can vote to put it on the ballot. Okay? All right, thank you. All right, so we'll go to city council, well, any, unless you have any other comments from anybody, but no, no, no.
I have another, another question, Mayor. Mayor, I have another question.
Okay, go ahead.
Real quick. On the ballot, when we go to the, to the voters, is it going to read 5% to 8%?
It will reflect the maximum.
The minimum and maximum.
It will reflect the maximum rate.
Eight percent.
Yes.
So it's not going to be that, we're going to ask the voters, what do you want?
We'll ask the voters to approve the maximum, and that provides this council with the flexibility to set the rate anywhere at the max or below.
Okay, okay, that was all I had.
But I'm pretty sure in that ballot statement, you'll be able to kind of explain that.
We will work very closely with the consultants to come up with a ballot statement that both meets the legal requirements as well as presents the information in the most accessible manner.
Okay. All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and, it's a six... Oh, okay. About this, or? Okay, go ahead.
Tom, I know you've sent this out to us before, so we have a general idea, but for anyone who's watching and, you know, the public who's here tonight, for future study sessions, can you just kind of give us an idea of what's going to come here in the next couple of months, the items that are going to come before us?
I'll have my list up, but I can tell you that, one of, while I pull it up, one of the topics that we're looking forward to actually is a session on shopping carts. The council has given us direction to come up with some ideas and suggestions on how to better deal with a problem that's been an issue all over. So we look forward to doing that. The schedule is?
I believe fireworks is coming soon as well.
Fireworks, that will be an ordinance. Can't just see the schedule here. Hang on just a second.
And then I believe homeless to work, they'll be giving us an update on that as well.
We will.
Do you have the list?
I don't, I'm just, I'm recalling it. I know he sent it out, but I'm just trying to recall.
Here it is. The Promise Program at Moreno Valley College, that one is coming on May, no, I'm sorry, you know, I was just sent the wrong schedule. Just a minute, I'm sorry.
Sorry about that, Tom.
I didn't know you'd want to talk about that.
Just wanted to let everyone in the public know, so that they are aware of, you know, what's going to come to the study session. So College Promise, Homeless to Work, Shopping Carts, Fireworks, all those kind of things.
Yes, fireworks won't be on a study session. Actually, that will be coming to you on the May 1st meeting with a draft ordinance.
Okay.
To have you take a look at that. Those are topics that we've also discussed with the Public Safety Subcommittee.
Okay, that should suffice, that should be.
Not my schedule, just open.
Okay.
Sorry for the delay. On, yes, on May 8th is the Promise Program and Shopping Carts. We will not be holding a session in June. And on July 10th, we will be talking, giving you a progress report on the Homeless to Work program.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting at 7:01 PM.